All right, everybody, I have six thirty-one. I'd like to call the November second, twenty twenty-three work session to order. We'll start with a call to order and the flag. So if you all stand up, pledge allegiance, and then take a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Tracy, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dietrich.
Here.
Mrs. Donahue. Mr. Elling.
Present.
Oh, is she on there?
She's on there now.
Mrs. Donahue. Mr. Johnston.
Here.
Mr. Knopf.
Yes, she unmuted and then.
Mr. Coke.
Present.
Ms. Lynch.
Here.
Mr. Shoals.
Here.
And Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you. All right. So the first thing we have lined up right now is presentations. Dr. Martin, you go ahead and take this for us, please.
Sure. So over the summertime, I met with all of our administrative team individually to go over how their last year went and some ideas or where they want to go for the following school year. And when I met with Dr. Amy Briant, principal of Mill Hall Elementary School, one of Dr. Briant's ideas was that we look at celebrating some of the elementary schools as we go through our public board meetings. And her request was specific because at the same time, we were discussing how we were going to start bringing forward student government representatives from both Central Mountain Secondary Schools as well as Bucktail High School. And so that idea kind of blended nicely with the idea that we'll have more student representation at our board meeting, starting tonight with our secondary students, but also celebrating an elementary school over the next couple of months. So since it was Dr. Briant's idea, I asked Dr. Briant if she was willing to go first. And so the rest of the elementary principals, I think she's going to set the bar pretty high because I've seen the list of things that she's doing this evening. And so I'm going to turn this over now to Dr. Briant to celebrate Mill Hall Elementary. So first of all, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. You know, as proud mom of your children, these students coming in are make me proud every day of the great things that we do at Mill Hall Elementary. But oftentimes, when I think about my elementary experience, and I'm sure you're the same, it's not so much, you know, the learning of reading and writing and the math and so forth, but I remember all those memories of special events and things that were done just to make my childhood even better. So those are the types of things. As I got a committee together at Mill Hall Elementary and said, what can we showcase? What do we want to show to our school board and a community that just kind of says, here's some of the great things that we're doing with our students? So we have Mrs. Amanda Confer here tonight. So she's going to help facilitate this group, but we're going to gather them around and I'm going to step back and let them do the show here. So thank you for the time. Mrs. Confer, if I would just say that if they're going to speak, they're either going to need to speak in the microphone so folks at home can hear them or on a portable microphone, which our principals may have laying on the tables. So to our students, when it's your turn to speak, you'll just either need to use the big blue microphone or the one on the table like I'm using, okay? You may have to put the mic by your laptop, Colton. All right, hello, we're here with Mrs. Kalusewicz's class, everybody.
There we go.
All right, hello, we're here with Mrs. Kalusewicz's class, everybody say hi. And we're learning about form. So form and music, we have different sections. For example, our A section or our intro, where we get to play our instruments. So show them how we do that. Ready, go. Nice, and left and six. And for our B section, that is our verses of our songs, we will be singing and playing the instruments. So just show them how we play the instruments. So ready, go. And right position. Nice job. And then for our C section, or our choruses, we'll be singing and doing motions. So let's show them how we do it, everybody. We can play our instruments, A section. Get ready for the listening. Ready, go.
This land is your land. This land is my land. From California to the New York Island. From the redwood forest to the bloodstream waters. This land was made for you and me.
Instruments.
As I was walking down this highway, I saw a bus stop that looked like a railroad track. I saw a road that rolled in, that rolled in valley. This land was made.
My name is Maya Rathmell, and I'm in third grade. All students at Mill Hall Elementary will have at least one piece of artwork on display for the month of November in the Ross Library Lockup. This exhibition will be on display in the third floor gallery area, which is the children's wing of the public library. The art will be shared from November third through the end of the month. Please come and see our amazing art and also find out about all the great things happening for kids at the Ross Library. Thank you.
Colton, do you want to go ahead and click on the picture first? Thank you.
The most important thing that we can all be.
Kind is kind.
A very special thing for you and for me. Just because.
When I think back to Mrs. Shadle Smith and the first time I met her, she had such a beautiful smile and a positive outlook on life every day. It's something that I will always try to treasure and remember fondly of her.
Mrs. Shadle Smith was kind.
She was pretty. She was super nice.
She gave the best hugs. Super kind and generous.
She was very kind and she always wouldn't yell. She was nice.
Was really kind and sweet. She was really generous.
Always give me a hug.
Mrs. Shadle Smith, thank you for showing us kindness.
So what is a buddy bench?
Have you ever been at recess with nobody to play with?
Buddy bench is where I need to go if I need a friend.
Now, if I'm lonely at recess, I get to sit on the buddy bench.
If I see someone on the buddy bench, I know they need a friend to play with.
I'm going to ask them if someone needs to play with. I was playing with all my, with the people that was playing with me.
Everyone should have a friend to play with.
Mill Hall Elementary now has a buddy bench on the playground.
Your friend.
I.
I know you'll be mine too.
And.
New things are hard sometimes.
Do.
Don't you worry, I'll be by your side.
Kind is kind.
The most important thing.
Hi, my name is Mrs. Confer, and I'm here to talk to you a little bit about the buddy bench. On our last day together in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year, we had a faculty meeting and we met together to reflect and discuss upon the year. One of the groups got together and was talking about how students could foster better relationships with each other. The buddy bench was mentioned at this group, and Mrs. Shadle Smith, a teacher that we lost over the summer, thought, isn't this a great idea? She was a very big instrument on that day, talking, we need this bench at our school. She shared her idea with the group, and the buddy bench was born. Since her passing, her kindergarten students and their families, along with our Mill Hall Elementary PTO, purchased a buddy bench in her memory. It seemed only fitting that the bench was designed with rainbow colors because her classroom followed the rainbow color decor. The buddy bench will be a reminder that kindness and friendship start with a simple smile that can light up someone else's day.
My name is Retne, and I'm in first grade. I am Mrs. Shadle Smith for my kindergarten teacher, too. Our buddy bench is a great way for students to show kindness to someone who doesn't feel included at recess. We should show kindness no matter where we are. How can you show kindness today?
And I have Scarlett here, too. She was a member of Mrs. Shadle Smith's kindergarten classroom, and along with her family, they were a really big part of the buddy bench, coming to the meetings over the summer and getting it kickstarted. So we only thought it was fitting to bring Miss Scarlett here tonight as well. All right, Colton, you can go ahead and go to the next slide.
My name is Josie McCann, and I'm in fourth grade. At Mill Hall Elementary, we follow our four Ps. One present, I can be safe, be responsible, be respectful, be kind, be the best I can be everywhere, every time. Throughout each day, points are earned by students who demonstrate these expectations. Once a month, we have a school-wide celebration for all students who follow the four Ps. In the past, celebrations have included game day, dance parties, and on Tuesday, we had a fall hayride. Points earned can be used to shop at our Walmart.
All right, we are lucky enough. One more.
My name is Riker Package, and I'm in fourth grade. Kindness is very important to the students and staff at Mill Hall Elementary. It is one of our four school ride rules and one we place great value on. We strive to show kindness inside and outside of our building to make our school and community a nicer place to be. We held a donation drive for the SPCA, collected pennies to buy beds for sleep in heavenly peace, and sent colors of kindness crayons to other elementary schools in the districts. Last year, a group of students got together and wrote this book about kindness. Mill Hall Elementary also adopted a theme song and worked with a dance instructor to learn our own kindness dance.
My name is Grady Package, and I am in first grade. Our Walmart is even better than Walmart. Not only can we use our points for toys, we can also get coupons to do special things around the school, like eat lunch with an adult, or pick a color for all students to wear to school. We can spend our points monthly or save them for a bigger reward. My goal is to earn enough points to buy a lunch with my teacher coupon.
And I was lucky enough to have lunch with three students I had in the past today with their coupons that they bought. Mill Hall also houses our multi-disability support students, and we have a partnership with LE Two. And there's a little slideshow, if you click on the big book there, that we can watch.
We've been cheering up for Lock Haven, University.
Once a week, they come to visit our classroom. They work on both fine and gross motor skills such as jumping, riding bikes, reaching, and grasping, and so much.
They had a lot of fun learning new physical activities and skills.
Hello, my name is Jen Markward. I'm the ESL teacher at Mill Hall Elementary. Today, I am lucky enough to have a student with me. She has only been in our country for two months. And she is very brave, smart, and she lights up the room with her smile. She is very nervous, but today I have with me a third grader. What is your name?
Estefania.
How are you?
Good. And you?
I am good, too. Estefania, what grade are you in? Who is your teacher?
Mrs. Scourge.
We also want to show you how we use the translator. I've done ESL several times throughout the years, and we did not have this technology when ESL started. So this is pretty awesome. Even though our focus is on teaching the students English, it's very important for us to still develop a relationship. So, Estefania, what grade are you in? We had it turned down when we were in the hall. She says she is in third grade. Tell me what you like most about being at Mill Hall Elementary School.
All of them.
And that means everything. What do you miss most about being in Venezuela?
My familia.
My family. What do you like most about being in Pennsylvania and being in the United States?
It's hard to be papa.
Being with my dad. Her dad moved to the United States over a year ago and got a job and got a place for them to live. And so she was not able to visit with him very often. Can you tell us how the iPad has helped you in school? If you did not have the iPad, how would school be different?
Estuviera aburrida, estuviera sola.
I would be bored being alone. Do you realize how valuable it will be for you to be able to speak two languages?
Yes.
When I read about people that know more than one language, it states that they have better memories and they are better at problem solving, solving problems, and obviously communicating with others. When we talked about talking at this meeting tonight, you said something very very eye-opening to me about the world. Do you remember what you said? She said, I think knowing two languages will help me understand this world a little bit better. It will be very powerful, she said. Thank you for listening to us tonight.
Thank you so much.
We just want to say thank you for welcoming us tonight to your meeting, and hopefully you get to see a little bit about what Mill Hall does each day. There's a lot going on we didn't get to present, but we love each and every day. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much to the staff, the students, and the families at Mill Hall Elementary. If anybody, I know that a lot of times we hear a lot of stories about public education, but if you weren't sure until tonight's presentation, you should be sure now that we have a very excellent education program at Keystone Central, and this is what's right with public education. I still believe that the American education system, with all its faults, is still the best in the world because we educate everyone. And so I think tonight's presentation demonstrated that very well. All right, the second part of tonight's presentation would be our student government. And if we could start with Bucktail, I know that we had Martin Lewis was supposed to be with us from Bucktail, but he did email me and said that he wasn't sure if he was going to make it back. He had two different meetings tonight. And I believe that there was a teacher that was going to stand in, our advisor, do you have the Bucktail advisor here this evening? Okay.
Microphone, please.
Then you have to go to the table.
Technology issues.
I know, right?
Yeah.
So Martin Lewis did have other obligations tonight, and he was unable to attend. We are in the process. We just finished our teacher recommendations. We formed a group. We're going to be looking at, there we go, we're going to be looking at doing elections next week for different positions within the student government body. We're also collaborating with Mr. Varelli to try to set up a trip, see how just legislative process works, so our students have the opportunity to see that. Something else we're looking at is meeting biweekly to discuss issues that students are experiencing at Bucktail, so that we can work on things together, try to make the school a better place for everybody. Sorry, I'm not a student. I'm not the right height. That's the only thing I have going for me.
Thank you. We look forward to more updates as we get further along through the school year. And now we'll turn it over to Central Mountain High School Student Government. Mr. Maidenford is one of the advisors. Lindsay Koba, another advisor.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Martin, administration, faculty, community. I am Dr. Doug Maidenford, German teacher and social studies teacher at Central Mountain High School, along with Lindsay Koba, English teacher at Central Mountain. We've been tasked over the last couple of months to get our student government rolling at Central Mountain. Based on recommendations from the Board and from administration as well, I have brought with me four of the best students that Central Mountain has in our hallways to tell us a little bit, to tell you about what we've done. One really great opportunity we just had back in October, where we are going, and then what the future might look like in regards to student government at Central Mountain. So I will turn this over to...
Hi, my name is Elise Sagan, and I'm a senior at Central Mountain High School. And I can tell you how we got here today. So last year, a group of students went to speak at a few school board meetings. And from there, we were able, we had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Varelli and Mrs. Klein, who gave us the opportunity to invite other students and teachers to discuss school issues. In those meetings, we realized that there needed to be a way for students to bring their ideas and concerns to administrators in a manner that could also represent the student body as a whole. From there, we decided that a new form of student government was needed to give students a voice and to open communication with administrators. We continued to meet every other week or so for the remainder of last school year, and along the way invited more students to get involved. We also did research into how other schools in our area run their student government, which included an online meeting with State High and Kirwinville. Additionally, I would like to express my gratitude for the school board's decision to change the end time of our school day from last year. It was greatly appreciated to actually see that our concerns were being heard and that action was taken, and it makes me hopeful for the future.
I am McKenna Gray, a junior from Central Mountain High School, and a member of the Student Government Committee since last year. I am here to tell you about an opportunity we had this fall to visit a Senator Firday Conference held by our Senator Chris Dush, a group of students involved in student government, including myself and seven other juniors and seniors. We learned about how our State House and Senate work, how a formal debate operates, and how policies are introduced and passed. We each worked in a committee based on our interests, such as education, state government, or environmental resources. We experienced what it is like to be part of a government, and we're excited to take on the responsibility of implementing a government of our own at Central Mountain High School.
Good evening. My name is Claire Bowman, a junior at Central Mountain High School. Tonight, I'll be informing you about our organization's progress in structure and positions. Our first priority was creating a position called Student Board Representative, as this was the most important issue for us, and we know it's important to you as well. We will have members of our group run for the position. The person with the most votes will be the representative, and the person with the second most votes will be the alternate if the speaker should be unavailable. This representative will meet with you at monthly meetings and speak on positive and negative issues students hear, see, and experience on a daily basis. Other positions we have decided to elect are President, Vice President, Secretary, Parliamentarian, and Communications Officer. At the end of every school year in May, they will run for office and be elected by popular vote. We are also in the process of discussing how we would like to admit new members into the group. So far, we have spoken about a system that we would explain the position to our students, gather statements from students who are interested, and have gotten a recommendation from a previously had teacher. Those students will then read their statements at a grade-level assembly. The students will be given paper ballots and be asked to put their votes in a box at the end of the assembly. This ensures This ensures a fair opportunity for candidates to be heard by classmates, make sure all kids are aware of the position, who is running and when they are to vote. This also eliminates some concerns of students who aren't interested in our group's ideas of student government. We are continuing to work on the organization's constitution and bylaws so we have a firm foundation to build upon and move forward with.
Good evening. I'm Sophia Dressler, a senior at Central Mountain High School and I will be telling you about our future vision for student government. We envision student government as a bridge between the general student body and the administration governing them. Regular meetings with student government members. Administrators and board members will better understand the daily student experience in Keystone Central and students will gain knowledge pertaining to the way in which a school is We want students to know that they have a stake in their education and that their ideas and opinions are valuable. We are thankful the Board has given us this opportunity. Student government will contain four parts: elected officers, elected representatives, the general student body and you, the administrators and board members. Each of these aspects is integral to the functioning of student government. To begin, elected officers will meet directly with administrators on behalf of the student body. The times of these meetings are regular, which will be determined. The school board representative is also considered an elected position. Second, representatives. These students are elected by their peers through, again, a regulated process that we will determine to vote on their behalf. Representatives will decide which topics the officers will bring to the administration in their meetings as well as vote on any changes to the constitution. Equal grade representation is ensured with a set number of representatives per grade. Third, the student body. Any student can attend a monthly town hall style meeting and their voice and voice their ideas or opinions, which will be considered by the representatives for a vote. Students also, as previously mentioned, vote for officers and representatives. Lastly, administrators and the school board. You are what makes this happen, reaping all of our ideas and concerns to you, which are used to inform decisions and policies. The goal of student government as a whole is to work cohesively with the student body and administration. Finally, cooperation is key. We want this group to give people a stake in their school, to give them a direct path to their administration that makes decisions for them. Many students feel powerless to change anything for the better, but we empower students to take control of their education and environment and we challenge you to listen to our concerns and to take them to heart when making decisions on our behalf. Thank you and we look forward to our continued cooperation and work in the months and years to come.
We have a lot on our plate. We've, we've, we've come a long way. We do have a lot of work to do yet. As Mr. Polito said, you know, Bucktail's made some progress. They have fewer students that they're trying to wrangle as we do here at Central Mountain. But you do have a dedicated core group of students, regent from ninth grade to 12th grade that are involved in this process. We meet every Thursday during our win period. And like the, the girls already said, we're really working hard at making sure our constitution and bylaws are set before we make any action because we want to have a firm set of rules so that everyone understands how things work moving forward for a smoother transition as some of these kids graduate and new kids come in, of course, coming up from the middle school. They are full of great ideas. They are really thinking about the whole student body. It's not just them. They are thinking about the kids that are in CTC. They're thinking about the ninth graders coming in. They're thinking about the athletes. They're thinking about the kid that never talks in class. They are truly representing the entire student body well. I have a lot of faith in what they're doing. We have a lot of faith in what they're doing and we know that this group is going to move forward and make some, some really positive change here at Central Mountain and hopefully across the district and creating young leaders moving forward. We do have some hopes to take a trip to Harrisburg here in the future. We've been in contact with our local state senator's office to organize a trip to do a tour of the Capitol and meet with the senator and some, maybe some other cool things that I haven't told them about yet. And we will continue to keep you updated and as soon as we have a student representative elected and that process is done, we hope to have them here with you at every work session as ears, but also as a voice of the kids that you don't get to talk to or hear from on a monthly or daily basis. So thank you for this evening. We're going to keep working hard to accomplish the goals that we have set and we look forward to reporting back to you in the very near future and hopefully, you know, having a student sitting here among you, ready to bring some great ideas to all of you. Thank you.
Before you go away, I just want to say thank you to our principals and our secondary principals and our advisors. And Mr. Romanich, I'm going to kind of follow up too. Central Mountain Middle School is also working on their student government process. They're a little bit further behind than the high school, but they want to make sure that those processes are bridged and consistent. And so what we promised, what I promised the Board is that we would work in that direction and, and I just wanted to just hear tonight what progress we've made so far. And additionally, I want to really thank the, the principals and the advisors because we got together over the summer. I think it was August and talked about what is the vision for student government in our school district? And how is it different than what's been done in the past? And we took what we heard from our students and we asked our, our advisors to look at what some other districts are doing and how do we give a genuine pathway of voice to our kids? And so that would not happen. I know our principals are very supportive, but they can't be everywhere. And I know that this wouldn't have happened without the support of our advisors. So kudos to you and thank you to our students as well, but I appreciate our advisors really taking a risk here and trying something new with student government. So thank you so much.
Thank you guys. Looking forward to great things from you guys. No, I mean, I, I don't have any questions. Anybody else?
I don't really have any question.
Is there a statewide student government association for all high schools that
If, if there is, Mr. Schultz, I'm not aware of it, but we can, of course, look into that. We, you know, we've studied state colleges, student government in Kirwinville and what was great about these kids, they could pick up, that would work there, but that wouldn't work here. You know, it's a different student body. It's a different sized school. And these guys were very quick to say, not here. But then also in the same breath, offer something that would work here. So they're very forward thinking. They really are.
I know that when I was a high school principal a long time ago, that there was actually statewide and nationwide conferences that were available. So if we could, maybe we'll work together to find out if that is something that is possible or is available and we'll figure out how we can maybe work that into your plans if you want that. And then additionally, you mentioned about going to Harrisburg and getting out to see legislators and I think that's an awesome idea. I will also say that I'll extend the opportunity to you to work with our legislators to get them to come here as well. They have been more than happy to come and visit Keystone Central. They know who we are. They know what we're doing and I know that they would most appreciate hearing directly from our students. So we can work that all, all different ways.
Cool. Thanks, guys.
Good job.
Anybody else have anything?
I just wanted to say I'm extremely impressed with what they've done here in a short period of time. Put, putting all that together, you know, I'm, I'm really very impressed. And I want to thank you for all your efforts and really look forward to even taking it off even further in the future. So thanks, thanks to the ladies that are here tonight and to everybody that's been involved, to the advisors.
There aren't boys in our group. It's just none of them.
Well, thanks to him too. I don't want to, I don't want to miss anybody, but no, I, I'm just really impressed. You guys have done a great job in just a very short period of time. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you, guys. All right. So, uh, next thing, hearing of visitors. Do we have anybody signed up? Okay, thank you. Okay, next, Superintendent's report.
Okay, unfortunately I have a lot of items for you. I'm sorry, but it's great stuff. So first I would just like to say that Dr. Zangara has been with us for almost two weeks now as a new assistant superintendent. He's been doing a great job working with our administrative team, getting out into schools, talking with folks. He and I have already had to handle some, you know, major administrative situations together and I think that's working well. He could not be here tonight because his daughter is playing in a soccer championship game and I told him that was more important than being here. You'll get to see enough of him in the future. But that's been going really well and as Dr. Zangara and I have been working our way across the district last week and he's been out in buildings again this week, so much has been going on in our schools this month. I mean, in addition to the things that we need to do such as our lockdown drills across the district, I think my phone has finally stopped ringing to, to warn me of all the lockdown drills. There was also BMX show with a message of good decision making. That was at all of our elementary schools. Huge shout out to all of our PTOs and our Keystone Central Foundation for making those events possible. Additionally, we had an author, a special author that went across the district helping, sitting down with students and helping them share in the process of writing a story. And so that's been amazing. I've received so many great, so much great feedback about that too. The next thing I wanted to talk about was the conversation that we've had at our administrative cabinet over the last year is how we can make some minor changes and start doing some more things to make all of our employees feel valued and appreciated. And a couple of ideas that we had thought of over the summer have been starting to come to fruition this week. So the first one I'll talk about is maybe on a smaller scale that not everybody has a chance to see, but in our admin hallway, there are a lot of people who work in this admin hallway that you never see at public meetings. But without them doing what they do behind the scenes, we would not be able to function as a district. And so our cabinet team has organized a process by which it's a peer nomination employee of the 10 days. Because along with that just recognition goes a gift card and also a special parking spot right out by the door. And so they would, whoever gets that each week from a peer nominee, or we figured two weeks of allotment of the parking would be good. So they'll get a two week special VIP parking spot along with that gift card. And so we'll probably also be announcing to you each week who that employee is in the admin hallway. I know many of our board members get to interact with some of those folks when you're here so often for meetings. And so it would be important to shout out them as well. Additionally, Teresa Carlson, who is on our cabinet as administrative assistant, has been working very hard with a committee of folks and she's been going out and knocking on doors with some businesses and talking on the phone about, hey, are you willing to do anything for our staff? And she has been able to put together a big list of businesses in our area who are giving extra discounts to Keystone Central staff members. And so I want to give a shout out to the following businesses who are offering discounts and employees know they have to show their school ID. Arby's 10% discount, Avenue 209 10% discount, Kentucky Fried Chicken 10% discount, Ray Azteca same 10% discount, Calico Creek 10% discount and Little Caesar's discount on selected items. So just a great shout out to, to you Teresa for organizing that. And who else is on your committee? Just been the cabinet or?
Microphone, please. Thank you, Amy.
We started over the summer with the committee. I know Tyler Barth's on it, Patty's on it, me, Tracy. Sure I'm missing some. I think Deb Klein, we just were just came up with different ideas and I said that I'd love to spearhead this and try to see what I can do. It's a work in progress. There's a lot I've talked to, but it takes them a while. They usually have to go to the general manager and it's a long process, but we're slowly getting some to come in. So it's nice to work with the community.
Thank you. The next thing I have, and this happens every year, PSBA sends us a children's book and lets us donate it to one of our elementary school libraries. And this year, we've decided with input from our librarians that The Memoirs of a Parrot by Devon Sicilin and illustrated by Tim Bowers should go to Rob Elementary. So Tyler Barth, if you would come forward to receive your donation.
Memoirs of a parrot. All right. Yeah, probably. Thank you very much.
And the last thing I just wanted to mention was that on tonight's agenda on under personnel, you'll notice the announcement of a retirement from one of our longtime administrators, Rolanda Murray, and I didn't want tonight's meeting to go by without mentioning that bittersweet making that announcement, but we just want, I wanted to make sure that the Board was aware and will at some point at a later date will be maybe making, having some more celebrations about that. And I think that is everything.
I don't approve.
That's all I have, Mr. Alley.
Okay. Thank you very much. And let's move on to the next thing. Okay, we're looking at committee reports, personnel.
Most of the personnel committee's focus right now has been on our superintendent search. We've been working with our consultant, Mark Draco, and we've had 10 candidates. And we start first round interviews next week with final round interviews, hopefully the following week, November 15th, with the hopes of having somebody in place or voted on by the end of the month. So it's been a quick and arduous process, but we're getting there.
All right. Thank you. Safety committee.
We met, I guess, two weeks ago. Had some pretty good discussions about some of the technology advances we're doing to help with security. They're coming along rather nicely. Some of the things we also, that Justin also reported on, he did some updates between comparisons on incidents from 2022 and 2023 that I found interesting. There is a drastic decline in the number of inappropriate languages being misused. Signs of disrespect have been a drastic decrease and the disruptions and altercations, there's been a decrease in the amount of those. So which is, shows some of the stuff we're doing is working hopefully.
That's great. Thank you. Okay, next, finance.
Okay, start with, Liberty Curtain bids were out today. I think you saw them as they come in. We are anticipating about $1.1 million surplus at the end of the year when we're done with the audit. So hopefully come January, we'll have to pass a resolution to move that money over to capital projects.
Okay.
So, but ends up being about a little less than 2% of our budget. So anytime we can work at that close, it's pretty good. It shows our, our budgeting tools are really working well. So, uh, the next thing I want to talk to, I typed something up. It's going to be a little lengthy, so sorry principals, but this is kind of important. Concerns of level up funding. The level up funding is money that the state legislators put into the budget to help adjust for all the money that was passed over through the years, part of the the court case. So I'm just going to read this off and the governor signed a budget back in August. Budget included 792 million increase, about 10% increase over last year's budget. It's still missing part of its enabling legislation, which is the important part, the enabling legislation. What means that over $100 million, which is budgeted and committed to our schools of being held hostage by our legislators in a fight with Governor Shapiro. This $100 million is called level up funding in an attempt to reform the public school funding system, which was determined to be unconstitutional by the Commonwealth Court on February 7th, 2023. This decision decided that public schools public schools of Pennsylvania underfunded by astonishing amount of over $6.2 billion. This underfunding places the majority of the burden of the cost of education on the property owners of our school district. Pennsylvania ranks near the bottom among states, 45th actually, in the share of education funding. Because of this inefficient funding from the Commonwealth, school districts are forced to raise local taxes. Communities with a robust local tax base can raise sufficient funding to meet the students' needs. Other districts like Keystone Central cannot raise enough money at the local level, even with a very high local tax effort. The purpose of the level up funding is to help do away with an inequitable system of funding by the Commonwealth budget to close the gap between the wealthiest and poorest school districts. Students in districts with the greatest needs are severely short chained. We need our legislators to level the playing field and free up this level up funding by enacting code bill. These code bills, which are typically passed alongside the main budget. These code bills are necessary to specify how certain funds are spent. The amount of level up funding that was pledged to Keystone Central is The amount of level up funding that was pledged to Keystone Central is approximately $4.5 million. There's been over three months since the Governor Shapiro signed a Commonwealth budget. Since this time, we have not received the funding that was allocated. We need everyone's assistance in contacting our legislators, Representative Stephanie Borwitz, Senator Chris Dush, and Senator Paul Tackeck and demand that they pass the code bills required to release the level up funding. We also need to remind our legislators of their duties as listed in Pennsylvania Constitution, Article 3, Section B Education, Section 14. The General Assembly shall provide for the maintenance and support of a thorough and efficient system of public education to serve the needs of the Commonwealth. So the reason I read that, I just want to make sure it gets out to the press, I think, see the wrong. We need to get everyone out there to contact the legislators to get this, this Fair Funding Act passed. Move forward, get the level up set. This four and a half million dollars was budgeted and for the 23 year, we haven't received it yet. And it looks like they're just gonna play with it and not do anything with it. And then next year will be four and a half million dollars short from this year and it won't be in next year's budget. So we need to get everyone to contact the legislators and get them moving forward and do their job. Pretty much all I have on finance.
I do have a question, Butch. The, the $1 million surplus, was that including that money or not?
Yes, that was last year. We had an amount of level up funding for last year, but we ended up with, we've been ending about that same spot every year. But the, having the level up funding allowed us to help balance the budget with, you know, like it just helps balance and offset where we're so far behind.
Right.
We were told that when budgeting process and the finance committee worked through this and we were, we were telling you that level up funding, we were told to go ahead and budget for level up funding. We were given amounts of money that would be, we were guaranteed would be included in the governor, governor's budget. So we have included for over $4 million of level up funding in revenue for the current budget year. The money is in the budget, in the governor's budget, it is there. It has not been released to any of the school districts. And if it's not going to be released and we can't guarantee that it's going to be available or released in subsequent years as we're planning for next year's budget, that puts a huge strain on this district to try to make up $4 million of revenue from another source. Or to cut significantly, to cut $4 million out of our budget will definitely impact staffing and programming. So I wholeheartedly agree with your comments, Butch. Everything you stated was accurate. And I would encourage this board to consider drafting a resolution over the next couple of days to put on the agenda for next week, to vote on a resolution with that same content in about the level up funding. I think our legislators need to hear from us as a board and my suspicion would be that this board would be precedent setting for precedent setting for other boards in the region and around the state to pass a similar resolution.
I think the only positive that been coming out lately, about a month ago, they did pass a code bill that allows some additional funding to medical institutions and hospitals. And about a week ago, they passed it to allow it to go to, I think it's Penn State Pitt. There's four major universities that are allowed to go to that. So they're starting to work slowly on it. But we only have till July that this fiscal year is over with and the rate they're going, it'll probably be after that.
I think it's also worth mentioning that adding the level up funding is a good start. It's not the end all be all answer to the unfair funding being unconstitutional. And I'm going to quote a colleague of mine, Matt Spleen, who is the superintendent at Otto Eldred. And Matt was a huge part of the testimony, his testimony was a huge part in the judge's decision. And one of, part of Matt's testimony in response to the question, well, what if we don't add more money to public education that we just reallocate it differently? And Matt's response, I think speaks volumes to that. He said, that would just be like moving the chairs around on the Titanic. So if you have ever had a doubt that Pennsylvania school funding is unfair, now's the time to look into that a little more deeply. And you can see tonight how we're using our funds to get the results we need as best we can. But it's so unfair when you look at the wealthier districts compared to the poorer districts on our Commonwealth and what that means and the difference in staffing, materials and resources for kids. And so I appreciate so much that you brought this further to light. I feel like we talk about it a lot and we're frustrated, but I would urge our board to take an action, starting with the form of a resolution. And I will say that I've been invited to be a guest on WPSU. And talking about the teacher shortage, which again, along with that goes to the part of that is the funding. And so I also had an opportunity to speak yesterday with some aides from Dr. or from Fetterman's office. Most of that was on federal funding, as, as you know, but trying to get out and get our messages to the legislators is so important. And I do know that our local legislators know who we are. They care about what you think and they do want to hear from you.
I just think Pennsylvania being ranked 45th is ridiculous. So we should be number one.
The top 20? Can we even go for that?
No, let's, let's go for top five. If we're gonna shoot, let's shoot for the moon.
Unlike the land of praise, I like to be number one.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm sorry folks, but not this election, but the next.
Switch your mic down.
Oh, it does, is it working? I don't know. You know, we're nonpartisan here, but in two years, when elections come up, please, please consider your candidate choice and whether or not you want them to be the person that supports education. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? No? Okay. Facility committee, please.
All right, I will try to keep this as brief as possible because we have, we do have some things from what we discussed on our meeting last October 24th. That will be up for, for discussion later on in the agenda. First of all, we, there was a, an item that was brought to us for discussion and recommendation, whether we approve it or not. And that was a, I guess it's a ATV type of a, of a machinery that is going to be primarily used for snow removal here mostly at the high school, I believe, which will free up another piece to go down to use, Rob, since they have a lot more area to, to deal with, with the new parking lot and so on. And we had discussed, as you'll see it later in the agenda, it's on here for, for your consideration as far as recommending, recommending it and approving it. It's, it is what's rather expensive, but in talking with Mr. Pacella, he felt that it was something that could not only be used for snow removal, but they need something to use on the artificial turf up here to, that can't be, it can't be something, I know that Butch asked about doing, using, getting a tractor or something. And that's probably going to be too heavy to put on the turf. And so after a lengthy discussion, I think and the money for it is budgeted, it's not like it has not been budgeted for. So we, we did go ahead and after getting a lot of, little additional information, we had go ahead and recommend that we approve that. Next thing is you'll see here also tonight on about the, the HVAC replacement parts for Mill Hall Elementary. This is kind of a continuation of the project that we've, we've already started to put in motion here a couple of months ago. As Butch mentioned in his report, the, the bids for Liberty Curtain Elementary, the new project, the building project for the new school where they were open this week and you will see them listed for the different ones, the different bids that were received. And they will be, the, the numbers that are there for your, for your consideration and we do, you know, we did go ahead and we recommended that we approve them. The committee is gonna, it has gone ahead and said that they would like you to, we recommend you approving it. I know we'll be doing some further discussion on this later, so I'm not gonna belabor it because Jeff Strab, our architect is, is here with us tonight to kind of go over the, the details on those. Other, just some facility project updates. We have a fence that's going to be installed around the rest of the Woodward Elementary playground area. We have that in the queue and it's probably going to be taken care of in the spring. Some annual concrete work curbs it, Renova Elementary ADA access at the middle school. There's a low spot. I know that the people near the concession stand were a little upset here a couple of weeks ago up at Bucktail. After we had all that rain and there was some, some puddles there. So I know that they're moving ahead to try and take care of that and fill that in. The other last item on the list was, it's been kind of a something that's been brought to our attention here a couple of different times in the last few months about the drainage issues at over in the KD Drive area by Homestead Estates. I know that the folks have come to us about that, wanting us to do something about it. I think I mentioned last time we had a survey done to see if we, you know, if everything was, has been done appropriately by the district. And according to what we found out from that, that, that we are really not, it's really not our responsibility for correcting the problem. I know that it is a problem and I feel for the people there in those, the condos that are getting all of the water in their backyard. So I guess the latest update on that is Dr. Martin has is waiting here back from, and we did check and see what it would cost to maybe do a study on that. And be about around nearly $5,000 to do that. And we were, she was, has kind of put that back to the Bald Eagle Township supervisors to see if they're willing to be able to work and fund that. So that's where we are with that. So. Other than that, I think that was it. So for facilities.
All right. Thank you, sir. Okay. Next is Curriculum or Co-Curricular Committee.
Thank you. We met in early part of October and a lot of this is as a result of work completed by Megan Hall, who I think is on, if anybody does have questions. She updated the committee that family consumer science curriculum has been updated and has actually some exciting new aspects to bring it, you know, into the new millennium essentially. There is a section now on exploring your future, what's called the adulting academy. And a lot of practical work for students. And a new area on the art and science of baking. And looking at cooking around the world and cultural issues. Sports nutrition has been revised and the child development section has been revised. So we'll be wanting that voted on next week and Megan's working on updating the science curriculum as well. And so we'll be hearing some exciting things around that as well. Mr. Lynch provided us an update of the Career Technical Center and continues some very progressive and exciting things for our students and the community. Their patient care technician teachers are certified now to give tests and certifications in EKG and phlebotomy. And the Patient Care Technician National Test is now given at the end of the school year. And he located grants to pay for the testing because that can be expensive. In ag mechanics, they've approved an industrial manufacturing technician pre apprenticeship. Another sort of cutting edge area. And culinary arts, Pro Start Hospitality Restaurant Association is looking into starting some pre apprenticeships for our students. And the CTC is looking to join a consortium. And in health occupations, another very exciting thing is six students are in the EMT, Emergency Medical Technician Program enrolled through Lock Haven EMS. And it's a plan that they'll graduate as EMTs in December. And three CNA, Certified Nurse Assistant students have been trained at Haven Place and they're now full CNAs. And in the construction trades, one, first full year of PA Builders Association program. And the students will get certified if they, if they pass national test. And a couple of other things which are with the community. Lathe operations and milling, the CTC has joined with Commonwealth University Lock Haven for adult education. And six people are coming from the industry side for that training now, you know, from in the community. And they're starting individualized instruction for first quality in machining. And there'll be four first quality head maintenance employees completing that. We also heard an update. So I, I do want to really press that we have an exciting CTC program. And I know recently several of us were in attendance at a statewide school boards association. And we had a number of conversations with school boards and they were incredibly impressed with our CTC. And so I, I think it's, it's a statewide model, it really is. And we did receive athletic updates from both Bucktail and Central Mountain High School. A lot of students doing wonderful things. So thank you to both and we appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. And Mr. Lynch, thank you for what you're doing. Okay, next. Uh, next thing on the agenda is enrollment report. Any questions? Okay. How about the Finance of the Treasures Report? We'll do it all in one section. Any questions, comments? No? Okay, good. Okay, next thing, the school calendar.
You can see we're planning for the 2425 school year. That is not a modification to the current school calendar. We typically do that at this time of the year. Want to thank Patty Stevenson for organizing the stakeholder group and getting their input before designing this calendar. This is a third or fourth iteration of it to get to this point. And it's pretty similar to the previous school year, but there is no leap day in that school year.
Alrighty, next we're looking at the donation from UPMC.
Yep, this would be some mats that would go in our sensory room for students who are in the low incident population. So we would really welcome that donation. It would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, and then we're looking at the exchange student.
This would be an exchange student from Russia. We're very excited about this opportunity. And I know in the past, the board has unanimously supported exchange programs.
That's awesome. Okay, uh, parent transportation agreement?
The parent transportation agreement, this is something we have done commonly for special situations. I actually found out some additional information just before tonight's meeting. There may be a change to this motion by next week, or it's possible that it could come off of the agenda just depending upon the details that I need. Need some, some of the other requirements or that, we haven't received all the information we need to, to permit this to, to go to that level. And I just found that out earlier this evening. So we may or may not see that next week. If you see it on the agenda with a recommendation, we've got everything we needed.
Great. Okay, and the Keep Safe Transportation Agreement?
And you are aware that we have used Keep Safe in the past. This has been a great support to the fact that we are still experiencing a drive, bus driver shortage. So anybody out there who has a CDL and wants to drive a bus, please get in touch with us. But these Keep Safe contract does help with the student transportation. And just to remind everybody, our buses currently run 7,500 miles per day. We are the, geographically the largest district in the Commonwealth and anybody at all who can help support transportation, we would greatly appreciate it. Sorry, had to put a plug in there.
Shameless, right?
Shameless.
Okay, yes, Elizabeth?
I just want to make sure everyone feels comfortable with this part. I mean, on page eight where it says it's, I was sort of hoping that we've sort of I was sort of hoping that we've sort of of all that we're always going to have cameras in buses and not that it's optional. So, I mean, I feel more comfortable supporting cameras in all buses.
This is a van. I believe that's a van. Is that a van, Joni? It's a van.
You sure? I mean, I it's just says that at the discretion of the Keystone School District. It's sort of like if you want them to or if you don't want them to. I mean, I personally support cameras in all vehicles for transporting students, but so.
I I don't think that um our administrative team would disagree that I can say that um the camera systems on our buses um when we are able to use that for discipline incidents or any even employee investigations or anything have come in um to be they're extremely helpful. Um, but I I think I would just say that sometimes it's not always possible and um but I think we'll take your um your comment into consideration and and work with the contractor on that that topic.
Okay. That being said, moving on to policies. Anybody have any questions on the policies that are listed?
If I may say there are six policy there on first read. And these policies will be on the agenda next week for second read and passage.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, um, let's move on to minutes. Anybody have any question of the the minutes listed? Yes?
Um, yes, it just maybe a an edit on the facilities committee. Minutes under C1. I would just like a little more clarification. Um, I brought up the solar power discussion about the McClure program that we learned about when we went to the conference with PSBA. And how it costs the school little to no money with their program. So in light of all of our budget woes, it just seems that this installation would lessen the cost to run that building. So we sort of talked about having McClure come to a board meeting and give a presentation on their solar program. That went really, really well with the Stilton High Spur School District. I mean, they're a low income school district and it was a game changer for them. Um, they're saving, you know, $10 million a year. So I would like for this to be possible for the next work session. If there's any board members that don't want to hear about it.
All right, Elizabeth, I do have a question for you.
Sure.
Are you looking at amending the minutes here?
Yes, discussion on solar power about it was a I mentioned the McClure program that I learned about at the PSBA conference.
So the minutes say discussion on solar power and rain harvesting. We'd like the minutes to reflect in more detail.
Yes, please.
Okay, all right.
Any objections from the other members of the committee? We can make that adjustment for next week before you approve the minutes. I think that's what you're saying is accurate.
That's fine.
I'm not sure that we can have them here for the next work session um on the other topic. Um, but I know that I've also spoken with the superintendent at Stilton High Spire. And um I told him that we would probably be requesting a visit in the near future. So we were planning to go, if you remember, facility committee, we were planning to head um down there last summer. Um, and then some other projects came into play. So um when we were touring elementary schools, we had talked about going to Stilton High Spire. So um I'll continue to work with them and follow up on that. But it sounds like we'll make some minor adjustments to the minutes.
Yes, and then.
I would say the next work session might not be possible because it's December. We really don't have much meetings or many meetings in.
Okay, maybe January. Um, so I would really appreciate that. And also there's sort of a um then the next second sex second sentence after that. It says Ms. Lynch did not recommend moving ahead. Well, that's that's partially factual. And again, the minutes are very hard to take. So this isn't about the person taking the minutes. It's just there's so much being said at these meetings. It's impossible to get every word, but I just want to make sure that my colleagues and everyone understands that I don't recommend it. I didn't recommend moving forward with a bond because I still feel that the school board members should have had a meeting to look at the final draft budget. And with the architect and administration and collectively see if we could have done any cost reductions. So that's why I didn't want, I didn't feel comfortable moving ahead because we never did that step.
Okay.
So.
That's why we have the committees.
All right. Um, all right. So.
Can I ask for clarification?
Sure.
So you're not asking to have that part of the minutes changed? You were just you were just clarifying that for the public?
Well, so it'd be in the minutes that um I didn't recommend moving ahead until the school board and administration got a chance to look over the draft budget and potentially um, you know, evaluate it and see if there was any potential way to do any cost reductions or any other savings options.
Okay.
I will go back and look at the recording and the meetings that we make sure that we have it accurate before we make any adjustments.
Thank you. Okay, next, under business bills for payment. Any questions? Okay, student activities, quarter one report, questions? PSO equipment, this is what uh Jeff has uh talked about in reference to the RTB. Any questions?
Just want to say that this was something that was requested through the budgeting process. I know it was requested actually over a year ago. We said, no, you have to wait for the budgeting process. And we did budget for it in Mr. Pacella's um general fund budget. Um, but because of the price of the object, that's why it comes uh in front of the board. And I also just want to say this one out to bid. I'm very pleased to say that a local vendor was able to pick up that bid.
That's great. Thank you. Okay, um, next is the award bids for Liberty Curtain Elementary Project.
So um we did open bids on Tuesday, Tuesday afternoon um here in the boardroom. And I know that Jeff Straub, our architect, is online. Um, and I'll kind of give you the the overview here is that the bids did come in and I made and um got another attachment today from Crabtree Werbal. That's more of a summary sheet. So I did attach this um second sheet to the agenda this afternoon. Um, it kind of condenses all the bigger the bigger spreadsheet into a smaller, more um manageable piece. And um what we we bid the project in four different sections. And um Jeff, if you want to take it away um and explain where we're at here, that would be great.
Okay, uh, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so if everybody has a uh a copy of this and should I should I share this or are people that have the summary page?
Would you share it, please?
I don't know that you can share from there, but there's. Okay, does it let you share? Oh, tech gave you permission to share.
Okay. Hey, I'm sorry. I'm just reorganizing myself here a bit. Okay, so yes, we received uh bids earlier this week. And correct as Jackie mentioned, we issued preliminary uh bid tabulation. Uh, but really just since we've been, it's just been a few days. We we just got this summary page completed earlier today. Um, and also as we spoke with different contractors. Um, unfortunately, just, you know, to start off, we we came in over budget. And most notably, if you remove plumbing, uh, we're about 12% under bu- over budget. If we remove some alternates, uh, we're about 10% over budget. And we do have some options. Also, we've been looking closely at some thought cost items that might be able to drop that by another couple percent. Okay, so um moving across the board, um, we had um Lowbar Inc. Was the apparent low bidder. And so I'm going to just start it start off with with sort of an overview and then we get down into the weeds. Um, and what you're seeing is both the base bid, the estimate for each of the bidders, and then how much it was over, under budget. And unfortunately, in in this scenario, it was over budget for each of the primes. Roughly, uh, Lowbar was uh about 7.8% over budget. Uh, but we also have the ability to remove the stage deduct for the stage, which we've we've all talked about quite extensively uh throughout the project as as cost savings. We had looked at a number of cost savings for the projects and really because uh we were very straightforward with the design, really, it was just a matter of uh, we were down to the point of eliminating program in order to reduce costs further. Okay, so that's that's why you're seeing this stage alternate here that adds up across the different primes. Um, we also had probably about another eight or 10 alternates uh for either adding or or uh items to the project. At this time with being over budget, the only other up one that we're we are recommending is um the bus loop right now to infill the center of that with paving for $23,000. And the discussion for that was that that specifically impacts the quality of the students. Um, it it what it does is it gives them a hard hard place base during the day and in clement weather. Okay. Um, the next was Hostler Corporation for HVAC. Uh, they were they came in at 2.9 million. Uh, they were 29% over budget. And then again, each of these, the stage deductions occur uh uh affects each of the primes. Okay. The next is the plumbing. Uh, while while all the bids were over budget, we we are bringing forward a possible recommendation for all the primes this evening, but the one we are not, we are very firmly not recommending to the board this evening is the plumbing uh construction bid. And the reason for that is um it came in at $77 a square foot, 3.8 million dollars or 148% over budget. Okay. Um, we immediately called the HVAC contractor after the bids and um both both the design uh engineer as well as contractors that we were we've spoken to, uh, everybody is uh quite shocked by that number. Um, what we've heard is potentially, uh, well, there are two, a series of things that have affected this. Uh, we only had one bid. Um, I don't want to say that that contractor may have inflated his number, but sometimes they don't sharpen their pencil as much as they should. Um, as well, we've heard from another, a number of other contractors that dropped out at the last minute that a large part of the problem was that uh subcontractors were not providing prices. They were not able to get pricing in time, so they had to drop their bids. And so that potentially uh played into that. So order of magnitude, we really should have been down at 25 to $40 a square foot at most for plumbing. Um, so that's why uh we're not recommending this at this time. We've also spoken to a number of contractors if you would potentially reject the plumbing bid. Then and rebid. Um, and we looked at a timeline and potentially even uh putting putting things out to bid next Friday with the board approval and then having bids come in for plumbing in the middle of December. Um, we have heard a a substantial amount of interest. We've also heard from some of the other contractors like Lowbar and Hostler, they have they have contacts in the market and they are willing to help try to get other bidders to bid the plumbing contract, um essentially trying to create more competition. Okay. I went into a little bit of detail, but that plumbing was has been a lot of discussion over the last few days. Uh, the next was Halstrom Clark Electric, uh, which came in at $54 a square foot, and that was about 17% over budget. Okay. So if you went with all contracts in, the project would be about 23% over budget. And a lot of that is because of plumbing, essentially instead of 3.8, it should have been down around $2 million. What we did then was you're going to see a line item here um across the screen. It says total recommended without plumbing. So when you take out the plumbing, that's I mentioned earlier, we're about just under 12% over budget. And then with the alternates, it brings it down further. And then in the yellow, you can see we're about 10% over budget at this time. Sorry, I'm going to try to pull up a.
Jeff, while you're pulling that up, I'll just um uh share some information with the rest of the board. So um when we keep saying the deduct there that you see um deduct GC2, HC2, PC2, EC2, um there in the drawing, there was a stage that was added to the the building and it's part of the plans. But we also talked with the architects about and and with um Mr. Ummenhauer and the staff about is the stage a nice to have or a need to have? And if you recall, the current Liberty Curtain Facility has a multipurpose room that is the gymnasium, the cafeteria and the auditorium, and it's actually the size of one and a half classrooms. That's how small it currently is. And it has a small stage within that space. What we decided that the new uh and it's an inadequate space. So in the new construction, that uh multipurpose area is larger. It is still um a multipurpose room, cafeteria, gymnasium, auditorium. However, based on the additional size, we do believe that if we were to have a program in there where we needed a stage or we needed risers that we could bring in the temporary, which we have in the district and set up that uh for the amount of times that we would need a stage for any type of an activity. And um it was very clear from Mr. Ummenhauer that the small group classrooms that were built into the design were would be used every day. Whereas a stage would not be used every day, would be used a few times a year. And so it's been my recommendation from the beginning that we don't I I think that is the one thing that I would say in this project was a nice to have. And so if you add up the deduct across all of those, you can see that the savings there is about $344,300, but that's not including the deduct from the if we rebid plumbing. Um, if that's rebid as an alternate. But if you accept the other three bids with that deduction, I'm not sure if we would bid it exactly the same. I think we would bid it um differently if we can. Um, so you can see that that could have been a higher amount of savings.
Correct. I I think the discussion was a stage is only used periodically. There are many schools that do exactly what was just mentioned of um really setting up risers for the few times a year where it's more critical for spaces that are going to be used every day or even the alternate for the paving, the parking lot area. That's something that will affect the students on a regular basis, giving them uh plates. So there was a lot of discussion about really what is most beneficial to the students uh day to day and bring forward recommendations.
In our discussion too, Jeff, I'll just add that not only would it be a used plate, the alternate paving of the parking lot space. Um, we also eliminated paving in the courtyard as we priced that differently, but we're not recommending that you take that alternate. We do think the number 23,600 is um very reasonable to pave that. And a part of that price is because they're already on site with their equipment. Um, so I don't believe if we didn't take the alternate paving um that you could get a better price for that um as a separate project down the line. So that's why we would recommend taking that with this um with the GC.
So there was a lot of discussion um also about, you know, obviously coming in over budget. Uh, what we're really struggling is is what we talked about at a previous board meeting. It it's just the inflation that has occurred in the market where over a 10-year period, there was a very modest 2% to 4% each year, which allowed estimating to be really uh more locked in for projects. And the problem is the escalation has really been frankly, has been unprecedented uh for the history of construction in the United States. That's that's how extreme we're talking about. And so we keep setting these upper limits uh believing that um we have more than accommodated it, but the cost increases continue to occur at such a rate that it's it's outpacing that. Um, so we felt very, very responsible that, for instance, we had increased. Um, I'm going to pick on HVAC and electrical. We were budgeting upwards of about $45 a square foot for those. And to give you order of magnitude, uh five, five years ago, HVAC was bidding more in $30 a For those, and to give you order of magnitude, uh, five, five years ago, HVAC was bidding more in thirty dollars a square foot. And electrical was bidding in the mid twenties. Um, so to, to ratchet up to forty five dollars each was a substantial increase, uh, that we were seeing. Uh, schools hit. Uh, the school was, we budgeted around a very similar school. Uh, same square footage, uh, a pre-K center, one story in the, uh, in the Millersville Lancaster area. And those were the budget numbers that we were seeing that, that came in for that project, but we're continuing to see that cost escalation, unfortunately. Um, so that's what, that's what's bringing in that, that eleven point nine four. And again, using some of these alternates, we can ratchet that down to ten percent. I did also just check, um, against the cost. Uh, against the cost estimate, I made mention that we can, we can reduce that spread even further. We believe we can get to about eight point five percent. There's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in soft costs. So the non-true construction cost. Uh, design permitting, all the miscellaneous, uh, 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 components of a project. And, um, we, we had some discussions with the district even today. That's, um, and this is something we wanted to bring forward was we have designed the building to be sustainable. Okay? So we have designed a very, uh, efficient mechanical system, envelope, roof insulation. Uh, acoustical or components in the project, daylighting in the project. All those are built into the project. Okay? And so I want to start off by saying we're not taking, we wouldn't be proposing taking any of that away. That you will have an efficient, sustainable, modern school. But the discussion we had today was, um, uh, should we continue with the lead certification? If we're trying to look at cost savings for the project. Part of lead certification is all the documentation that goes to that and it's very intensive. Um, and a substantial number of hours, uh, engineering wise to document everything, uh, both with the contractors. Uh, uh, finalize energy modeling, things of those components. Doesn't mean we're changing anything with the building. It's just document, a documentation process. So what we wanted to propose to you this evening is if we stay with the building. But we remove the documentation pro- process. You, we could bring another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars up into the construction, which would, would reduce the overall budget. Um, in, or over budget from ten percent down to about eight point five percent. Okay? So. Sorry, a little in depth, but I wanted to, uh.
So.
Hold on a second, Elizabeth. I'll get you.
So just for those of you who haven't been part of the facility committee all the way through. One of the things we talked about and the committee members were unanimous about early on in this project is that we build an efficient building and look for. Um, silver designation in the lead L E E D, um, process. And so, um, just to give you a real quick recap on that. What Jeff is saying, quick summary is we're not going away from that decision. What we would be moving away from to save that funding would be the additional, um, work. That takes to designate the lead certification and get a plaque on the building that says it's lead. So you would still have the same quality that you've planned for. You just would forego, um, a process for a quarter million dollars to. Look where a lead certification through this inspection, additional inspections and so forth. So it would be my recommendation after, um, communication and also with Mr. Pacella and Joni. Along with, um, Jeff and Drew from Crabtree, that that would be something that we think the board should strongly consider doing.
Okay, Elizabeth?
Thank you. Um, to be honest with you, like six months ago, Jeff, this is no, I'm actually surprised you were going for the certification. Because when we first talked about this, I remember, well, it doesn't matter, but I'm not surprised. I never thought, I thought that's what the discussion was like six or eight months ago, or whenever it was, was that. You're going to strive to do as sustainable, energy efficient as possible within reason, but. You'd said that we wouldn't most likely be going through the certification because of the extra expense. And I think everyone was just like, yeah, that makes sense. And we just sort of moved on. So don't worry about me, Jeff. Um, I was never there to begin with, so about the certification. So we're good.
I think we, what we talked, if I, my recollection was, and Jeff chiming in, I thought our recollection was which level of lead. And we were talking about going with the silver, um, designation, but, um. At any rate, it's, it's just another point of clarification. That doesn't come out of these numbers. It comes out of the soft costs, which are also part of the project.
Oh, these don't include the soft costs?
No.
Oh, my God.
But the soft costs are built into the overall budget. So that's, that's really what holistically. Obviously tonight, we're just focusing on the, the bid hard numbers because that's what the board needs to proceed with that component. Uh, but that is a way of reducing the soft costs for the project. Um, it, it's good to hear that, that feedback. Um, I, we're always just cautious with lead certification. Um, and so if there is that ability, again, you're going to have a building that, um, is extremely efficient. Um, all those features are built in. We just won't be documenting the process, which brings a substantial saving to the district.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Good.
Um, Jeff, I'm just gonna ask a quick question. Maybe you can get back to us. Um, this is sort of jumping away from what you're showing us, but not really. Um, when the school does go solar at some point in the future. The, is there any possible chance it won't cost us any more money for you just to let administration know where you would recommend the solar panels go? And hopefully that won't mean you have to dig anything up a- after the fact.
I mean, uh, the entire roof is eligible.
Um, they don't want the roof. I'm sorry. But it may be in the future you can let us know.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Can I just chime in here for a second? I, I totally agree, you know, which is highly unusual too, but I agree with Elizabeth on this point.
It's okay. You're not going to burn it.
The, the, um. On the, on the leads thing, I think that, you know, obviously to save a quarter of a million dollars, especially when we need to be looking at. How we can, uh, maybe reduce some of these costs, especially the soft cost. I think that that's, that's one of those dice to haves, but we don't really need to do that. Um, what I would like to see maybe is kick it back over to Dr. Martin and, and. And the folks that she's working with on this, uh, I'm part of the administration team and see. Um, you know, these, these are all preliminary numbers here and they, they are over much over what we had hoped for. But I, I'm sure that we can find some ways to, to pare it down and if, if you can work with Jeff and whoever.
Thanks. We, we have already started that as of Tuesday. And just even looking for any other, and, and Jeff, do you mind sharing with, with them what you said to me about trying to pare down this building?
Um, related to the contractors or grants or?
Just, I mean, the part about this isn't, this isn't a Taj Mahal style building. It's a very basic. We didn't put anything in the base bid that was outlandish, I would say, or maybe over, over budget. And, and I mean, you're the expert on school architecture, so I, I'd be thinking it would, sounds better coming from you.
No, so, so twofold and there's been a lot of conversations the last few days. Uh, we, we sort of anticipated some of this discussion. Well, I, with the contractors, I should say, um. We knew that, really, we had designed a building. It's, it's, you know, the classroom wings are a flat roof structure. You know, with a low slope for proper drainage, but essentially it's a flat roof structure, very straightforward. Um, you know, block construction throughout the building. Um, really, we had minimal finishes. It's getting, is it going to be nice in the main lobby? Yes. Um, but that's a very limited area and sort of, um, even what we did was, was not substantial. So we, we did follow up with the contractors. Um, most notably, uh, Low Bar Inc. Cause they are the ones that control those components of the construction. And unfortunately, that was the same, they came to the same resolution of Jeff, there's, there's not much that you guys can go after. Um, to try to, to reduce costs. There were not, um, very fancy materials, things of that nature. We're not putting tile on hall, on walls throughout the building. We're really just doing painted block, uh, things of that nature. Um, they said they would be willing to, to investigate, uh, some with all of us as, as construction gods started. Not that there aren't opportunities, but it is very limited because we, we were creating a straightforward building. So. Okay?
Well, I, I think what we, you know, what the committee and I, I'm, I think I can speak for the board. And most of us, um, what we really want to do is, is make a, a good sound building here. It doesn't have to be the Taj Mahal, but we want something that, that the folks in that, and students in that community can be proud of. And it'll be serviceable for the next four, five, six decades. And, you know, I thi- I think we have it to this point, you know? And, and the economy is what, it is what it is. I mean, it's just ridiculous right now with the price of everything. And I think, you know, we, you know. I personally want, that's what I want to see is, is a, that's good, solid, serviceable building. Doesn't have to be extremely fancy, but you know, from what we've seen in the, the designs and videos and so on of it, it's going to be a pretty. A pretty nice school for, for that community and which, which they need. And that would make our, all of our buildings in good shape. So hopefully we can do what we need to do to get the cost down somewhat and without having to. You know, add more to our financing and I'm confident that we can do that.
I'm sorry, Mr.
Okay, yes.
Jeff, someday in the future, it's not necessary right now, but I'm just hoping. Uh, I'm sure you've already figured it out, but is that cost in the plumbing? Do they need a sewer grinder pump? Cause it's in a lower elevation? Is that why the price went up too?
Uh, I don't believe we have a grinder pump, uh, related to the project. But we did challenge, um, the, the plumbing engineer. We do have a fire pump as an example that's required for the sprinkler system, uh, to get the water pressure up. There were some things with the plumbing. Um, but he is starting to look at the drawings. Is there anything that he could maybe. Uh, modify in the next week before we would go out to bid again with plumbing? Um, we think some of it's just having more time so that they can get the subcontractor pricing, but we are going to also look at any changes for cost savings.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you can, if you can get more interest in that and so you get maybe more than one bid. Which I'm sure you're going to try to do. I mean, that'll certainly, certainly help to drive it down hopefully, so.
Our conversation too on a timeline with that was to, um. With, you'll see on the agenda, there's two motions, J four and J five. J four would be to award the three bids that we've recommended. Um, J five would be to reject the bid for plumbing, plumbing and rebid. If you, if the board does approve that motion next week, um, we would be prepared to rebid the plumbing as early as next Friday. Um, we have looked at a deadline for opening those bids in, um, middle of December. Which would give us enough time to get a board agenda item. And if we need to do any type of, um, extension of that, we could have it extended. Potentially up till December nineteenth, um, but we'd want them to do before that. That way we could prove, um, receive the bids, have a chance to look over them and get them on the board agenda for the school board to consider at the January meeting. And we still believe, I think Jeff mentioned this earlier, that rebidding the plumbing on that timeline will not, um, delay, derail the timeline. That we're on for construction, because just to remember backwards, uh, planning says that we're, our goal is to move into this building in August of twenty twenty five. And, um, so we don't think this will delay the timeline.
The only comment I have, I think it's very important that we move ahead with accepting these bids next week. Cause any farther delay is going to raise the cost considerably.
Yeah, if you rebid all the other ones, you're going to come in higher than what you, it's likely that you would come in higher, um, obviously than what you're getting now. As, as, um, Mr. Straub indicated, every month that you wait. Um, and that was part of the reason that the facility committee talked about getting this project bid in twenty twenty three. Um, because we knew about the inflation and waiting until, um, the turn of the calendar year is not going to fare well. We've kicked the can down the road on this project and Polly, I cannot believe you haven't chimed in yet. So, um, we've kicked the can down the road on this. This has been on our radar for over, uh, for five years. And, um, we were going to be looking at a construction project, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty twenty one. And I think we all know what happened in twenty twenty. And so we pushed this project off. As long, every year that we pushed this project off, we did not sink one penny into that building. And the people that work in that building every day know that. Uh, Wendy Zimmerman has a nice collection of shingles in her office because every time the wind blows or the rain comes down, shingles come down with it. Um, our principal and staff members have been in the hallways cleaning up, um, sewer. That has from pipes that are breaking. This building, um, again, just to remind everyone in the public. That if we were not to do this project, um, that the board has directed us to follow through with. Um, the alternate option that was considered was a renovation where over ninety percent of that existing building would need to be renovated. And at this point, even reverting to something like that and piecemealing a renovation project still would prop, would end up being as costly, if not more. And so unfortunately, the inflation is playing a part here, but I still, still think that the district and the facility committee has done. A really great job getting this project to this point, um, with all the obstacles that have been thrown and, um, at you. So thank you for your support of this project. I know Brett and the, the staff at Liberty Curtain greatly appreciate your support on this.
And Polly said her microphone is not working. She would have chimed in quite a while ago. Keep telling me stuff.
Well, that's good to know that she's actually talking to someone because, you know. All right. Um, okay, let's move on to the next thing. Installation of unit at Mill Hall Elementary Project.
Um, this is just a continuation of the project that you've, we've already bought the units. We have the units and this is just a continuation to get them placed and set.
Okay.
And the dissolution of a communication contract, we have a placeholder on, on the agenda and I'm hoping to get some documentation. Um, for next week. Um, many of you know that through our communication plan, one of our goals was to get a communication tool. That we could use K twelve. So parents with kids in different buildings across the district would have one login for communication to and from. So we contracted with a company that provided that. We had some technical difficulty early on. The, um, we tried to fix some of those things that the companies, the company has been trying to fix. It wasn't on our end. It was on the company's end. And quite honestly, um, they have been unable to meet our needs. And unfortunately, um, the board has approved a contract with them, a renewal contract, but, um, and they kept promising, promising, promising. And they have not come through. And so is our, going to be our recommendation that we dissolve the contract with that communication company. We've already reverted back to a different tool that we had rejected earlier because of, um, just the style of it. But our staff, our principals are happy that we've reverted back to class dojo and, um, away from blooms. So I believe that we'll need to take some action to dissolve that contract and I'm just waiting on that documentation.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's move on to personnel. Any questions, comments and the personnel? No?
I'm not going to prove it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's move on to the curricular, co-curricular, uh, athletic personnel. Questions, comments? Okay, master course catalog. Any questions, comments?
Did a great job.
Okay, club advisors? Family consumer science?
Is there any, is there any updates on the clay shoot?
We actually have a meeting tomorrow on schedule C. And I know that is on the agenda along with a couple of other things with the music program at Bucktail and, um. Something else that we've been talking about, but it's on the agenda for tomorrow.
All right. Thank you. All right. With that, I will, anybody else have anything? Say, okay, I do have one thing to say. Um, as a veteran, I would like to thank every veteran. Here and at home. Thank you for your service. Um, Veterans Day is coming up. And, you know, for all you guys, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for everything you've done. Appreciate it.
Okay, on that note.
Yes.
Uh, next Friday, they're going to have a, uh, presentation and performance at Bucktail celebrating.
That's awesome. All right.
There's also, I think a lot of different programs at the elementary schools and, um, a few other locations. We'll get that information out to the board so that if you, um, so choose to join in on any of those, um, you'll have an opportunity to do so.
Great.
Thanks for reminding us, Roger.
No problem. All right. Anybody else? Questions, comments?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, um, Rick actually made the motion.
I didn't hear you, Rick. I'm sorry. Speak up. I'll second that.
All right. Meeting's over.
Thank you.